All right, at six forty-five, let's start the joint meeting of the City Council and Board of Finance. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you all don't mind, we're gonna skip introductions. We don't have anybody new tonight because I want to make sure that we stay on time. We have a special guest waiting. All right, number two is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September tenth meeting?
Move approval. Second.
Changes, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have the consent agenda. It's A through F. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number four is the general fund contingency account, and I'll entertain a motion to transfer sixty-five thousand dollars from the general fund contingency account.
So move.
Second.
Any questions on this? We're just balancing out at the end of the year here, obviously. No comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is a general fund to make an additional appropriation of three million, one hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars within the general fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So move. Second.
Got it. Any comments, questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And the BOE special audit. I'll entertain a motion to transfer forty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars from the general fund contingency account for the BOE special audit. So move. Second. Great. Just for clarification here, Sue, you have a question first? We'll do that.
I guess maybe you might explain it in clarification, just a little. Is this a routine audit?
So Dave, you can add to this if you'd like to, but the Board of Finance every year chooses a department or the Board of Ed or some other area to do an audit, and this is just good accounting practices. I think the last time we did it was twenty seventeen, so we're on, you know, track every five or six years. You might want to do this, or we might even be a little bit late. We know that at the time that we authorized this, we knew that they were gonna be a little bit overspent, and we want to just get a, this is not a forensic audit. This is just to look at good accounting practices, get some ideas of what's happening, and just maintain good procedures within the Board of Ed. Internal controls is the correct financial term.
That's what we've done with the other departments.
Yes.
Obviously, it's customized by the Board of Ed versus the police or other departments we've done, but nothing different.
And to be fair, one of the more complicated budgets that you're gonna see, so maybe we should be doing it more often, by the way, but that's a whole nother story.
CLA does it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, which is the auditing firm that we work with. Any other questions? Comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number seven is the resolution of the bonds. For those who were at the Board of Finance meeting, we just approved this, so I will entertain the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds in the amount of twenty-seven million dollars for the payment in whole or in part of the outstanding principal of and interest on any and all premium on the city's twenty-one million, one hundred thirty thousand dollar general obligation bonds issued date of twenty-seventeen and twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollar tax-exempt general obligation bonds issued of the twenty-eighteen series A and cost related there, too. So Dave, can you move that for me?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Great. You want to just add what we added for the Board of Finance so that people know what we're voting on here on the council?
We have some bonds that have gotten to the point where they're callable, so at this point, we have the ability to refinance of those bonds, and this is simply refinancing that at a lower interest rate to save the city some money.
Yep. Comments, questions from council? All right, all those in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry, resolution.
Waive the reading first.
Um.
Motion to waive the reading. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to the roll call, though. Thanks, Erica.
Commissioner Campion?
Yes.
Commissioner Duquette?
Yes.
Commissioner Heiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Mace?
Yes.
Commissioner Mikowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien? Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickow?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Panioto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. And number eight is our monthly report. Diane, I didn't see you behind there. Good, you ready? I'll call you up.
Good evening, everyone. Couple things just to add on the special audit, just for clarification. CLA has been the city's auditors for our regular audit. When they come in and they do that special review and the internal audit, it's basically how we look at it. There is a separate division that does that, so there's no overlap of the auditors. Just to be clear to say that, that they do have, kind of like we do here, kind of like a segregation of duties or a separate division that does that. So it is always good.
Can you guys hear them?
No, I can't.
I can't hear them either.
Yeah, I just was, it was just me.
We can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Yep.
I accidentally turned myself off here. Okay, so just wanted to clarify that because there is, there's always something good that comes out of it and always some good processes that we can put in place and so, and I think we're all kind of looking forward to what comes of it. So you have the report, couple things that I do want to point out, and nothing, the tax revenues are coming in very well, as they usually do. Our building permit fees are at thirty-five, thirty-one percent. I just want to note that we are dollar-wise collecting more than we did last year at this time, but we did increase the building permit fee revenues by five hundred thousand when we were setting the budget this year. So still doing very well. Same thing with conveyance fees. Little behind dollar-wise and percentage-wise, but we also did increase those fees as well for the budget. Investment earnings right now, not in the Munis report that you have, the September, the August interest was not yet posted to the report that you had. So total through August is five hundred eighty-eight thousand, which is very good. We're actually at fifty-three percent of the budget only through the first two months of the year. So I think that's really good, and I know we're doing a very consciously watching the market and where our funds are invested. And again, like I know in the report, the main reason I highlight these revenue resources are, we do budget them conservatively, and there's a reason for it. We kind of anticipate that they will come in a little bit over, but we don't know how much. Everything is contingent on the market volatility, the real estate market, and any other economic activity that might affect these revenues. So again, while we budget conservatively, I think it's always good to not chase the revenues. And as you noted in fiscal twenty-four, that actually contributed to a lot of the surplus and allowed us to cover some of the deficits that we did have, as well as send money over to some of our reserves that we like to build up, like our mill rate stabilization reserve. Any questions on any of that? Just thought I would highlight those revenues a little bit more. On the expenditure side, nothing of significance to note at this point. So everything on the city side actually is going as planned. The audit, final work, audit work is scheduled in, actually, two, two and a half weeks. They'll be out here Monday, October twenty-eighth. And as you know, at the last Board of Finance meeting, and tonight, the final amount needed for the Board of Ed was three million, four hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. We will have that transfer for your next meeting. We have to true-up all of the accounts and transfer those funds. So the Board of Finance will see it at their October meeting, and it will be at the joint meeting in November. And we have to get that done, because if we delay that any further, we'll delay the audit. And as discussed earlier, the special audit for the Board of Ed will be starting in a few weeks. I just wanted to highlight briefly, tonight you did authorize a refunding issue. It kind of came about, we do need to borrow some short-term money to get through the next year for some of the projects that are either in process or complete. So the total, as you'll know, that we need to borrow for notes is thirty-five million dollars, and I did list out for you everything that we'll be financing with that. I think the largest items, as you can see, is Northeast Middle School, Green Hills HVAC system. While that's pretty much complete, we have not financed that yet, but we are just going to do notes for that for now. Fire station renovations, anticipating over the next year, we'll need four million for that. And also, Page Park revitalization, I think is another large one at four point nine million that we'll be financing there as well. And then I did include for the animal control facility, one point two, pending where that property shakes out over the next couple of months. So total, it's thirty-five million dollars. I'd originally thought we would do about thirty or twenty-seven to thirty, but when I looked at everything, I said, let me take care of where we are right now for the next year. Interest rates right now for short-term notes are under three percent. When I looked the other day, I think there was another town that was comparable to us rating-wise, and they issued at two point nine two for about the same amount for one year. So if we stay within those parameters, we'll stay within the projections that I estimated for debt service. Again, and so that's it on the notes. Just to touch on the refunding, my plan is to have it structured so that we can achieve the savings in the first, in the years that I know we are going to have some difficulty with debt service. And right now, it's twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The estimated savings on the refunding was about a million dollars. Of course, we won't know that until we issue, but the plan is to try to use it to help us have a little bit of relief in those, those two years. Rating agency call is scheduled for this Thursday with S and P. We do not have to do one with Fitch. We just did one. We just have to give them a brief update. Sale is set for October thirtieth with the closing of, I know, about November twelfth. So that's that. Any questions? Try to talk fast.
You did well. Any questions live on Zoom? Nope, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other matters to come before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. And this is perfect. We got two minutes to start our City Council meeting right at seven. All right, it's seven o'clock. I don't remember the last time we started a City Council meeting on time, but it's a very auspicious day, so I'm glad that we can do that. So at seven, I will call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our ceremony tonight, Joe, you can stay standing and come on up to the front. I'm actually gonna come up here and read a proclamation. Mr. Caminetti, Joe. Right up to the front with me there. Come on up. So everybody, I want to introduce you to Joe Caminetti. Joe has a big day coming up, but clearly, eighty years ago, Joe also had a big day. So I have a proclamation here that I'll read first, and then we'll honor Joe appropriately. Whereas nearly eighty years ago, Americans were pitted in the battle on a small barren island called Iwo Jima, whereas a standard of courage established by the men and women of the Fifth Marine Amphibious Corps in that battle is unsurpassed. Whereas we now enjoy the blessings of freedom for which those men sacrificed so much, it is appropriate for us to reflect upon the high price of that freedom. Whereas for thirty-five days, men of the Third, Fourth, and Fifth Marine Divisions fought to secure the strategic island of Iwo Jima, the cost of the eventual American victory was the highest in Marine Corps history, five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dead and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two wounded. Whereas of the over twenty thousand Japanese defenders on Iwo Jima, only one thousand and eighty-three survived. But the victors and the vanquished alike shared uncommon valor and a common virtue. Whereas, to date, there are about two hundred total survivors from this battle. Joe Caminetti, from the city of Bristol, is currently known to be the only Connecticut survivor, and there were, and there was, he was there for the operation as a Marine amphibious tank driver. Whereas Joe delivered supplies to the island, was there when the flag was raised on Mount Sarabache, and unfortunately transported too many bodies to count. Whereas Joe will be turning a hundred years old on Sunday, October thirteenth. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey Cagiano, Mayor of the City of Bristol, do hereby designate October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Joe Caminetti Day. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand on this eighth day of October in the year of our Lord, twenty twenty-four, to commemorate this true American hero. Very fortunate to have gotten to know Joe through my dad, Joe, who literally walks every day with this man at the gym. I can say this, Dad, this is true. My dad is fifteen years younger than you, and you outwalk my dad every day. Not surprising the kind of spirit that you have and what you've done. So I also want to present you this commemorative key to the city, Joe, and you are a treasure that Bristol will remember forever. I am sure you will be the last Iwo Jima survivor with the health that you have and the humbleness that you live your life. We're also honored and pleased to have you here on the city of Bristol. Congratulations. I think you wanted to say something about home.
I think families walk away in a club.
You see them around. When you live this long, Joe, you know everybody in town, right? Okay, so everybody else, too, a couple of other announcements. So a public ceremony will happen at the American Legion on Saturday from one to three. So post two on Hooker Court. Please pass that word around, and let's all celebrate Joe.
I'll have cake and coffee, and I think they're gonna give a drink. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. All righty, let's move on to item number two, which is the approval of the minutes from the September tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Move approval.
Second. All right, you got it. Changes, corrections, amendments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Promised Eric is something. First, I didn't care. Logan, you're first. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Logan Williams. I live at forty-four Hall Street in Bristol. Mr. Mayor, I rise today to express great concern about actions that were taken by two of your city councillors under your watch. Last month, Councilwoman Olson and Councilwoman Tyler opted to hold a meeting, which they marketed as an official community engagement meeting at an undisclosed location. In my outreach to both city councillors about their decision, I stated emphatically that the choice to hold a community gathering in a secret location serves only to obstruct the attendance of their constituents. By requiring that citizens call them to RSVP for a public event, these city councilwomen are reserving the ability to filter attendees so that they are surrounded by a roomful of supporters, whether they choose to take advantage of this ability or not. They're also preventing various constituents from attending and having their voices heard, such as those who are uncomfortable calling strangers or those who find out about the event late. Councilwoman, as elected representatives, you have an obligation to engage with each and every one of your constituents. Bristol citizens should not need your permission to engage with you at a community event. True community engagement does not come with such arbitrary restrictions. It involves speaking to any constituent who wants to discuss an issue with you at any time, and it involves encouraging the attendance of your constituents at community events, not making that attendance infinitely more difficult. Mr. Mayor, the reality is that by using a secret location, these councilwomen are requiring their constituents to seek their approval to participate in the democratic process. Yet, still considered as the choice to organize such an exclusionary event was, I have only chosen to mention it as a context for my real concern. The misdeeds of Councilwoman Tyler and Councilwoman Olson pale dramatically in comparison to the worrying justification offered for their behavior. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Tyler did not hesitate to blame you for her actions. In her text message conversation with me, Councilwoman Tyler made certain to describe your philosophy towards leadership, Mr. Mayor, as one of remaining quiet and ignoring your constituents. When they reach out to you with their concerns, she juxtaposed your philosophy with her desire to give all of her constituents the right to discuss any topic with at least two of their elected officials in fellow residents. Yet, quite terrifyingly, Councilwoman Tyler seems to believe that there'll be some form of hostility from you, Mr. Mayor, as a consequence of her efforts to serve her constituents, quoting again from Councilwoman Tyler's text message conversation with me. We, as in she was referring to Councilwoman Tyler herself and Councilwoman Olson, choose not to have our community engagement meetings in City Hall for many reasons. The principal reason being there should be no interference from the mayor. Constituents are not happy with him. He tries to prevent us from serving our constituents in the way that we do and should. The emphasis was hers. In other words, Councilwoman Tyler believes that she has some good reason not to feel safe or comfortable executing the responsibilities of her role as a city councillor and representative because of your behavior, Mr. Mayor. In fact, she has been made to feel so uncomfortable that she has to go out of her way to ensure that she is not engaging with her constituents in your presence. Mr. Mayor, in both the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-three election cycles, you campaigned on a promise to bring increased transparency and accountability to local government. In fact, it was probably the only substantive policy position that the vast majority of Bristol's citizens associated with your name, because you had endeavored to depict yourself as a man of the people. Thus, I must ask you a few questions. As a purported champion of government transparency, how does it feel to know that, at least according to city councillors from your own political party, you were understood as ill-tempered and have been seen to obstruct the democratic process that you were tasked with upholding? Mr. Mayor, what actions have you taken that would lead Councilwoman Tyler to believe that she was not supported in her endeavors to faithfully represent her constituents? What do you have to say to those citizens of Bristol who voted for you because they, perhaps naively, placed their trust in your promise to lead an open and honest administration? Is there a reason that you believe you were above engaging with some constituents? Finally, and most importantly, will you publicly apologize to Councilwoman Tyler for whatever actions that you have taken which have caused her to be uncomfortable in your presence and which have led her to the impression that your brand of politics runs contrary to the best interests of her constituents? Mr. Mayor, I sincerely hope that you will answer these questions before leaving the city council chambers tonight, lest your silence serve as sufficient evidence to the people in this world that Councilwoman Tyler was correct in her withering assessment of your character.
Logan, as you know, and I know you know, that we've had coffee together many times. This is not a public forum to have a debate. I appreciate your public comments. I'm happy to grab a cup of coffee with you at any point. Next on the list is Mike Arasenko.
For record, Mike Arasenko, Forty Palmer Place. I'm just gonna be real brief. Jeff hates kids on the Zoom call, that's me. I did that last month, and I was kicked out of the meeting. And as a veteran, I was a little offended because it's a first movement violation. As you know, government should never try to control its citizens, especially when they're criticizing elected officials. That being said, I want to give you some updates on Alex and why I feel this way. So Alex just turned five. He still is not potty-trained. We're working on that. He's still to actually say a complete sentence. We get about, eh, maybe three words in a row. He's got a long way to go. And it's hard, because I see kids who are three years old, I see kids who are two years old, and they're, they're already ahead of my son. And he's kind of in this no man's land because he doesn't have a true diagnosis, because he keeps passing the greens test, so he's not autistic, but he's not like a normal functioning five-year-old. And I've been listening, I've been talking to Treasurer Parente, who's been giving me advice. I wish he would be giving our school district advice, but we all know how that went down. And I don't know if I can bring it over, what you did and what you and Whit did, because it got back to me today about that conversation that Whit had with Sue and Jen. And the fact that you sold out our school system and kids like my Alex, because for peace and unity, I now know what peace and unity was all about. Just pisses me off. I'm done.
Is there anybody else in city council chambers that would like to address the council? How about online? Let me see. Oh, that's okay. You can come up. That's fine.
Uh, first.
Yep, just name and address for the record.
Jan Getzris, uh, five seventeen Churchill Street in Southington, but I was Bristol resident for sixty-five years, so. And I represent the friends of the Hoppers, Birch Pond. The Shafert-Babrowski property in the Hoppers, which we believe the city may be interested in purchasing, is really quite special for several reasons. It is well-used and well-loved. In just a few hours of talking to folks using the Hoppers Dog Park, we collected over two hundred emails of people concerned about the possible mining and development. Folks were really eager to talk to us when we brought that up, and they were horrified that their beloved Hoppers could be ruined. Number two, the Shafert-Babrowski property is the most used, most scenic, and most geologically significant section of the Hoppers. You know, the Hoppers is a decent-sized place, but this is really a key, key section of the Hoppers. The main hiking trails pass through. It's the highest section with the best views and some of the best examples of kettles left by the icebergs. And some people's view, the best examples in the northeastern U.S. are within the property or very close by. The Old Colonial Road and Indian Trail, this property, the Shafert-Babrowski, contains part of an Indian trail that stretched from Poughkeepsie to Boston, which became then part of a colonial road that stretched from Litchfield to Hartford. Native Americans used the large kettle depressions to herd and kill deer, and the kettles are likely to contain Indian artifacts. And finally, it's a passive-use park, which costs the city very little to maintain, but has so many benefits to our residents and to our natural world also. And we all know that our woodland animals and plants need all the help they can get these days. So we strongly urge the city to do whatever it can to purchase the Hoppers, and I would love it if you folks are the ones that could pat yourselves on the back and say, we did it. It would be a great feather in everybody's cap. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here live? I'm not seeing anybody. We'll go one more time to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom like to address the council? All right. Hearing none others, we will move to our announcements, and let me start on my left this time. So let's, Councilman Rosengren.
All right, I just have a couple. There's gonna be, it's called Faith in Blue, trunk-or-treat, Friday, October eleventh, from four to six. Check out the Bristol Police Department Cruisers, Evidence Truck SWAT, and more. No costumes necessary. Join the BPD and Bridge Community at forty-three School Street, Bristol. That's one. And the other is, next week, the Boys and Girls Club, and it's probably this, yeah, will be hosting a toddler program again this October. Itsy-bitsy beginnings. This program is from nine-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM on Thursdays, October, our ten-ten, ten-seventeen, ten-twenty-four, and ten-thirty-one. This program will be held on the West Street site. The program will be taught by certified teachers with ten-plus years of experience. They will begin learning music, movement, stories, crafts, and more. It's a great time with your children to interact with kids their same age, as well as parents, they can meet as well. Space is limited, so contact Steve Beecher for more information at steve@bp- Uh, space is limited, so contact Steve Beecher for more information at steve@bpgc.org. And that's all I have. Thanks. Councilman Dick.
Um, on Saturday, October nineteenth, Bristol Pride will be holding a Pride Circle, which includes having, they have a bonfire unless it's raining, they'll be inside. They have music, raffles. They have, they say costumes are encouraged. This is at the Good Shepherd Church at eight-five-one Stafford Avenue. On Friday, October twenty-fifth, is the Bristol NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet at Testa's Banquet Facility at seven o'clock in Southington. And this year's main honoree is retired Chief Brian Gould. Um, now I have something very important. Um, the city of Bristol has been awarded Gold Status in Sustainable Connecticut. This is the second municipality in the state of Connecticut to receive this honor. Previously, Bristol has been Silver. Last year, we just missed Gold Status. This is to the hard work of David Oaks and Lindsey Rivers. Um, and on November thirteenth at the Kate in Old Lime, the state will be presenting Gold Status to the city of Bristol. And I do see that Sean Dunn, the, the Energy Commission is online.
So congratulations. I know Sean, uh, was a big part of that. Congratulations to many, uh, City Hall employees and Board of Ed, uh, employees. This has been a collaboration for many years. So, uh, will also be recognized from what I understand uh, at the CCM Conference in December, which I know I will be a part of, and I'm trying to make sure I'm at the Kate as well, too. So, congratulations. Good work. Sean, if you wanted to say something, you're, you're on mute. There you go. Go ahead.
Just a little correction to what Councilman Dick said. It's Old Saybrook, not Old Lime. So for those who are looking to attend down at the Catherine Hepburn, or what's colloquially called the Kate, it's in Old Saybrook. So we'd love to have as many people from Bristol as possible. I'll be glad to drive as many people who want to get in the back of my pickup truck and drag you all on down there for the great award.
Very good. Um, and Sean or Mark, if either one of you have the link and you can send it to me, we'll put it on the mayor's, uh, Facebook page, too, the link to sign up.
We'll take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. You're good, Mark. That's it. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, um, I just want to lead off with what's happening at Rockwell Theater and with the Arts and Culture Commission. Events coming up. This Thursday, we're still doing Throwback Thursday movies. E.T., um, Phone Home E.T. It's a classic movie. You know, this is, the, the line is a troubled child summons courage to help a friendly alien escape Earth and return to his home planet. It's family-friendly, five dollars. Followed by this Saturday, we have, um, award-winning Pam Tillis. She's a country, uh, western artist. Will be performing. Tickets are still available. Showtime is seven PM. Uh, tickets are available. You just have to type in downtown Rockwell and it will lead you to the ticket site where you can purchase tickets. Coming up on, in November, this one's gonna be awesome. Um, people have seen the Daily Show Comedy Show. It's the longest-running program on Comedy Central. It has won twenty-four Emmy Awards. Well, the Daily Show Writers Comedy Tour is coming to Rockwell Theater on Saturday, eleven seventeen. Tickets are forty-five dollars. So you want to get those tickets early. And the Spooktacular is going to be just in a couple of weeks, on Saturday, the twenty-sixth. This is a free event to come down to Bames, to meet the vendors, to get candy, to be entertained, uh, from three to eight. There are two matinees. There's a matinee show and an evening show. They are five dollars each. And the afternoon, we will be showing Hocus Pocus on the big screen. And at seven thirty, the original Terminator, because it is the fortieth anniversary. Of course, there's going to be the, uh, coffin run. I've seen a video of one of the coffins being test-driven. Um, it really, uh, has set the mark for anybody else who wants to build one. All the instructions can be found on the Bristol Parks and Rec page. Coming up, uh, again, on this Friday, the eighteenth, it's Beer for a Cause. As if you ever really needed a reason to have a beer. This one is with the Bristol Firefighters. Uh, Local Seven Thirty-three is partnering with the New Cambridge Project. There's going to be fun down at the, uh, Cambridge Project. There'll be raffles. There'll be a special release of a new beer. There'll be food trucks. Uh, if you missed out on purchasing one of the breast cancer shirts, they will have some for sale there this Friday. Um, all proceeds donated benefit, um, the Beasley Center for Breast Health and Wellness. This Saturday, the American Legion Post Two-O-Nine is doing their annual Domestic Violence and Suicide Walk from eight AM to three PM at Rockwell Park. Uh, what they're encouraging is people to bring a donation. And all donations will be split fifty-fifty between both Saint Vincent de Paul and Prudence Crandall Woman Shelter. So please come down, make a donation, enjoy Rockwell Park as a community. Um, and let's save lives one person at a time. So thank you to Two-O-Nine for putting that together. And if you missed out, speaking of T-shirts, if you missed out on the Animal Control Facility T-shirts, our fundraiser to help raise funds to construct our new facility, they will be for sale at the next couple, uh, Farmer's Market. Farmer's Market is Saturdays from ten AM to one PM. It's going on through November second. Short sleeve are twenty dollars and now we have a long-sleeved version for thirty. So come down and if you miss getting your T-shirt and get one this Saturday. Those are my announcements.
Thanks. And I'm gonna break, break our tradition a little bit. Uh, I am now the Veterans Council, uh, liaison. So I have a couple. We've talked about a couple already. Just want to remind people again. One to three PM, Joe, Kim and Eddie's, uh, celebration on the twelfth. Uh, the New Britain Marine Corps Group is actually coming to do this presentation, too. So one to three at the American Legion. Um, just something of interest, too. Tommy's Place is doing a, uh, dinner for veterans on the eleventh, honoring all veterans on the eleventh. And I believe Jimmy's on the River is doing a breakfast for veterans. So, uh, some of our local, um, restaurants and, uh, catering places are, are taking care of our veterans, which is great. And the last announcement is, uh, important. Again, at the, uh, theater that, uh, Cheryl was talking about, there's a veterans concert, the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble. That concert will take place on November tenth at three PM at Bames, uh, even better than the five-dollar deal for E.T. that I am going to on Thursday, by the way, which I'm excited about. Uh, this one is free, a free event for the city. So, um, that's all I have from the Veterans Council. Commissioner Panato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I first want to just say congratulations to the Bristol Public Library for being recognized as a top performer by the Department of Defense for their Vietnam War commemoration. Um, our library director, Deborah Prozo, and our assistant director, Scott Stanberg, uh, worked very hard, uh, getting the traveling Vietnam War memorial and doing events to honor our, our veterans there. Um, this is directly from their, the library page's, uh, Facebook release here. The Bristol Public Library has received a commendation from the Department of Defense for being a top performer in the office in the official Vietnam War commemoration. Bristol Public Library is ranked in the top fifteen percent of the more than thirteen thousand organizations participating in the commemoration. The library has worked with local veterans organizations to host events and exhibits such as commemorative penning ceremonies in which Vietnam veterans receive their official Department of Defense thank you pin via the library. The dedication of a permanent exhibit of memorial items placed at the wall that heals slash Vietnam traveling wall for Bristol veterans. A commemorative event for spouses of Vietnam veterans and educational programs concerning the Vietnam conflict. Uh, we appreciate the recognition from the DOD and are pleased to help honor our Vietnam veterans. So congratulations to the library. It's a very distinct honor.
Um, I also I do have to interrupt you because we have one of our distinguished Vietnam veterans in the audience as well, Mr. John Lotovico. So I, I see him back there and I just need to call it out.
Without question. Um, I also want to say thank you to the Catherine Gaylor chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We had fifteen or so volunteers, including our, uh, City Cemetery Commission members. And I also want to say thank you to, um, Councilwoman Jackie Olson for helping to clean up the North Cemetery this past Sunday. Uh, we did a lot of work. The cemetery is looking great. I know we, we do the Reads Across America ceremony there, December fourteenth. We do that to honor our war dead. Um, we'll have more information for future cleanups of the, uh, of the North Cemetery. But it's looking a lot better. And I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that showed up to clean up the cemetery. That's it.
Sebastian, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Cemetery tours this year? Did we announce that before or?
Those did take place.
Okay, I missed them this year. All right, sorry. Those are great, by the way. So if nobody's done that, we have to get that earlier next year. And I gotta get that on the mayor's page. Commissioner Olson, announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I have a few from Parks and Rec. Uh, Kids Night Out. That is for ages six to twelve. It's from six to nine PM on, uh, at Mrs. Rockwell's Pavilion. It's twenty dollars for residents, twenty-five for non-residents. October eighteenth for Kids Night Out is the pumpkin decorating. November fifteenth is called Escape Room. December thirteenth is PJ's Movie and Cookie Decorating. Kids get pizza and they're gonna have games and arts and crafts. So, uh, parents can, uh, register their children at www.bristlerec.com or they can stop in at the Parks Department at Fifty-One High Street, or they can call. So all of the Parks and Rec activities, it's the same thing. You register online or you can stop in at the Parks Department. The other, um, event that they have is Coed Flag Football. That's for ages eight to twelve. That did begin on October fourth, but it goes to November twenty-second. That's on Fridays from six to six fifty PM at Chippin Hill, uh, Middle School Gym. And the other is on the, this is the Twenty-Seventh Annual Turkey Shoot Basketball Contest. That's scheduled for Saturday, November twenty-third, nine thirty AM to noon, and that's for ages four to thirteen, also at Chippin Hill Middle School Gym. And there's a chance to win a twenty-five-dollar gift card to purchase a Thanksgiving Day turkey, along with other great door prizes. And last, I would like to congratulate, uh, Deputy Superintendent Sarah Larson. She was selected as the twenty-twenty-four R. Peter Ledger Young Professional of the Year with the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association. So congratulations to Sarah. Um, then I have Public Works. The Fall Leaf Collection begins October fourteenth and goes through December sixth. Residents are asked to put bags out at the curb whenever they're full. Uh, residents and commercial landscaping companies are allowed to drop off leaves at the transfer station at no cost. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we'll start with the Senior Center. They have a bunch of things going on this month. They will have a team, a very large team, um, walking at the Alzheimer's Awareness, uh, Walk for the Cure event at Rockwell Park, um, on the nineteenth. They also have their big annual craft fair, and that will be on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That's from ten AM to three PM. Um, Jackie and I did a bunch of our Christmas shopping there last year. Great event to, uh, go to. That will be held in their gymnasium. Uh, the Senior Center also has Medicare, um, open signup. That's gonna start on October fifteenth and that will run till December seventh. Uh, for any additional information on any of these events, you can call the Senior Center at eight-six-zero-five-eight-four-seven-eight-nine-five. Uh, I just wanted to mention again that the Mum-a-thon is scheduled for Sunday, October twenty-seventh at ten AM. That will be held at Saint Paul's. Um, and the Rotary Club stepped up this year to make sure that this, um, you know, very lengthy event continues into the future because of some of the construction in the neighborhoods. Um, they are only going to have the five K race this year. Um, so they're hoping to return it back to what it's always been, starting next year. But you can just go online. They're on Facebook. They have a website and you can sign up for that. Um, finally, out of the, um, Police Memorial Committee, um, this was a committee that was convened about two years ago. And, um, we spent an awful lot of time because a lot of members of our community had some really great ideas and, um, ways of wanting to make sure that the city, um, honored our two officers from two years ago. We, we worked really hard and with much thoughtfulness, um, over the last two years. And we actually held our last meeting yesterday. Um, and the one thing that really came out of this committee was, um, a memorial, which are, um, the two sets of doors from the police car that was out in front of the police department immediately following the tragedy, uh, tragedy. Um, there's gonna be an unveiling on Friday morning at eleven o'clock in the lobby of the police department. And that is where one set of the doors will be unveiled and the public, um, can, can see them. Mayor, I believe that it will also be Facebook Live.
Yes, that's what we're talking about doing.
Um, and we, we kind of got a little sneak peek at one of them, and this is just a really, um, awesome thing that was, that was done. And I want to also thank Melnick, um, because they also did a lot of the work for the stand and, um, so that we can present the doors.
Yep. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna jump on, too, just to give a little bit more because I think, I think you were talking about this is, um, the memorial that we came up with. But I also want everybody to know and make sure that it's clear to the public and the council that, um, the Memorial Committee did disband after this. We were, we were looking at other options and many things came to us. But to be very clear, the PBA and the, the, um, police, uh, union has come up with a memorial that will be a permanent memorial at some point when we relocate, um, the Bristol Police Department. So, um, this is a, uh, interim step, I would call it, uh, to make sure that we have memories. I think it will be very emotional for many people. There's many citizens that signed those doors and they're gonna be very uh, excited to see this, to commemorate and honor our officers. So, yeah, a good work by the Memorial Committee. I just want to double down on that one for you. So, great.
And it is at eleven o'clock, but the police lobby is only so big. So we do encourage everyone to, um, if you can't leave your office or can't leave home, to come and attend, hop on Facebook Live.
And it's, it's, it will be open all weekend, too. So beginning at eleven PM, eleven AM is the unveiling. But the police, uh, lobby will be open all weekend for people to go look at it as well.
Actually, the police lobby doesn't shut down. It'll be even past this weekend.
Correct. Anything else?
That's all.
Great. Any other announcements? Did we miss any? I think we're good. We will move to number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Items A through J are listed on the Consent Agenda. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number six, which is reports and committee reports. And we have, uh, four from ordinance. So we're gonna turn it over to you, Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll begin with a motion to waive the reading here. Uh, uh, item six A and six B, um, are, are together pretty much, but we'll begin with six A. Um, in accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Court of Ordinances be introduced, the state pertaining to section two dash eighty be waived.
Go move. Second.
Give Olson the second then, I guess. Okay, very good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
I hereby move that section two dash eighty, same early retirement option of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish set amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
We have a second?
Move a second.
Very good.
So these, sure, six A and six B here, just for refresh, these two components are related to, uh, early retirement language. And, uh, the vesting section, um, it, it essentially aligns our ordinance language with the existing CBA language, uh, excluding police and fire. Uh, bringing, um, our years of service, uh, from ten to five years of service. We received word from the actuary that it would have minimal financial impact long-term and according to, um, also in conversation with our comptroller, Diane.
So this is cleaning up the language to make sure it matches those agreements. Questions? Comments?
Just one other comment. I, I think it's also important that this will help us in recruiting, um, staff because it aligns more with what happens also out in the private world. And so as we look to recruit staff or retain staff, I think this also adds that intangible benefit as well. And as Sebastian said, the cost is, is basically negligent.
Yep. Other comments or questions? All those in favor? Other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Sebastian.
Uh, in accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced this date pertaining to section two dash eighty-six vesting be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Sebastian with the ordinance change.
I hereby move that section two dash eighty-six vesting of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second.
Olson for the second. Um, just cleaning up this language, correct? Nothing else to add on this?
The years of vesting.
Yep. In the Charter, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Sebastian.
In accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced this date to pertaining to section eighteen dash one seventy be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And I have a motion here to hereby move that chapter eighteen, article twelve Bristol Transportation Commission, section eighteen dash one seventy, members of the Code of ordinances, members of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the city, to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from their date of publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second. And Cheryl, I know you're on the Transportation Committee, so we'll give Sebastian a half a second break here. Let you explain this one.
Yes, um, this actually came out of our committee. Um, you know, the city planner has long been required by the Code of Ordinance to be a voting member. Um, this simply um, removes them as a voting member, replaces them with a citizen at large so that the commission is more of a voice. The um, city planner will continue to be um, an advisor, an advocate, a resource. Similarly alike at several meetings, we have Corporation Council. And it could be the Director of Public Works. It could be the City Planner that pop into the meetings to give advice and guide along the meetings, but it just changes them from being a voting member. And they can also send their designation should they have a, a conflict.
Excellent. Questions or comments from this group?
I would also add that um, Bob Flanagan did attend our last ordinance uh, committee meeting and um, we did wanna hear from him. I think it was especially important. Uh, so we did throw us two cents in there. As long as we have a qualified candidate to fill his spot and as Cheryl mentioned, he will be uh, available for input. So that's the important part of this as well.
Great. So we'll be needing to look for uh, two members, I think, uh, at this point, but we will do that. Um, assuming this passes, by the way. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Last one, right? Sebastian D.
Mr. Mayor, in accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced this date pertaining to section five dash nineteen fees be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Another motion?
I hereby move that chapter five, Building and Buildings, Building Regulations, Section five dash nineteen dash fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second.
Great. And Sebastian, uh, explain this one for us if you would and give us a little.
Relation to building permit fees, we've made essentially a, a simple change here. Um, new construction alteration, removal, demolition, we're building operations on city-owned property as regards to the city, the Board of Education, the Water Department. Uh, so these fees will be waived. We've felt that. Um, given the, the projects that are in front of us with a, a firehouse, a animal control facility, other projects that have taken place and the challenges that we're facing with meeting the budget guidelines, they're tough. Um, we're having to bond this money to pay for the, the projects. Um, we did receive input from the Building Department, from um, uh, Public Works and others. We um, we came to the consensus that um, waiving the permit fees was a, a common sense thing to do. Uh, we appreciate all the input that we did receive. Um, and we're looking to do it right the first time when we start these projects uh, from the ground up here.
Great. Other ordinance committee members wish to speak on this?
Um, yeah, as we've, we've talked about this at the last meeting, it's basically, um, you know, you're just moving money from one bucket to another as far as the city's concerned. If you don't, you know, charge it as part of the permit, you don't have to um, expend it as capital. So it's really just a shell game. You're just moving it around in the buckets. The end of the day, the clear thing we said is only for city-owned properties that this um, is, is applicable to.
City-owned properties with city-owned building projects. Yes, I think that's the other key link.
Correct.
Yep. Um, others have questions or comments? I will call the vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Um, we're good on the ordinances. We'll move to real estate. Commissioner Tyler.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I hereby move that the city-owned property known as Lot one twenty-nine dash two on Tax Assessor's Map Two Violet Drive be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash twenty-four report specifically to address proposing a lot line boundary adjustment with the adjoining property known as one twenty-seven Daisy Circle. I further move that the city-owned property known as Lot one twenty dash nine on Tax Assessor's Map Two Candlewood Drive be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash twenty-four report specifically to address proposing boundary line adjustments with the following adjoining properties. Two forty-two Candlewood Drive, two fifty-eight Candlewood Drive, two seventy-two Candlewood Drive, and eight, I'm sorry, correction, two eighty-two Candlewood Drive.
Second. Great. Uh, Sue, you wanna talk about this just a little bit and we'll have more to come, but I just wanna give people.
This is something that the real estate, um, actually the last two real estate committees have been working on for some time now. It was discovered, at least in this one particular neighborhood, that there were five neighbors encroaching on city-owned property. There were a lot of complications such as deed restrictions on our city-owned open space. Uh, Attorney Steeg spent a great number of months and got that cleared up. There's also been previously issued permits on fencing and structures. And to complicate it a little bit more, some of these um, residents bought these houses with the structures and the fences up, kind of indicating when they bought their property that they own the property. But we in fact do. So basically, um, a lot of work was done and the best resolution that we could come up with is to do um, some boundary line adjustments to protect, you know, to, to take the little pieces of uh, property that we need to and um, transfer it over to the neighbors and then keep ourselves, you know, on our own property as well.
Through the chair. So this isn't to, so the whole purpose of this is to give the property to these, to these people that have encroached?
No.
Okay.
This will be very similar to what we um, just did with the encroachment at sixty-four Washington Street. Where we're building the new firehouse. We actually um, uh, Tom Denote, our assessor, determined what the value of that little portion of the parking lot was. Plus also tacked on the cost of the um, survey.
But that was, that was a different situation, uh, in my humble opinion because um, we acquired that property not recognizing that they were encroaching. I mean, the, the previous, they had encroached on the previous property owner and maybe even the property owner prior. So it's, it's different. Um, in that case, because when we, we acquired that. So I don't, I don't view the two as the same, uh, is the only point I'm making. Um, so the intent of this is to move, it, it, my question is, is your intent to then move the property line so that we've reduced open space?
We will be reducing open space with this proposal a little bit.
So if we vote yes on this, we're agreeing to move that property line?
This motion is simply to send this out for eight dash twenty-four. It's just a part of the process.
And we'll get mainly planning zoning type of um, input back.
Positive referral or negative referral. We need their input.
We will have to make a tough decision at some point, but tonight is not.
That's what I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions from the group here? Again, just to be clear for everybody else, we're, we're sending this to um, the other parts of the city, the Planning Commission in particular, that will give us some opinions back on whether this is needed open space, as you just brought up, Cheryl. Um, may give us some other information back, positive or negative referral. We'll, we'll take it from there. Uh, by the way, I do appreciate all the work that's been done up to this point and this will be a difficult decision, no matter what decision we make, so. All right, on this vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Sue, and I think that's it for you as well. Um, let's go start, stay with you, uh, Councilwoman Tyler for any other uh, committee reports.
Uh, just a little update on code enforcement. Um, I want to publicly welcome um, our brand-new zoning officer, Brandon Pete. I have not had the pleasure of meeting him yet, um, but he is now on board and um, it's been since January. So we are embracing the fact that we have a zoning officer up and running. I also want to welcome and uh, congratulate Shannon Newberry. She has been our temporary senior administrator uh, for code enforcement for the last two months, three months. Um, and she was just officially um, hired as the full-time position. So I think yesterday was her first day as the full-time position. Um, she also has just been amazing and is really um, taking the team to all new levels. Um, very impressed with her work product. Uh, just a few quick numbers here, year-to-date. Uh, we're already into October. We have had three hundred and eighteen complaints of tall grass. And all of them to point have been resolved. Um, maybe tickets issued, um, or liens placed on property. Most of them, you know, the residents just went ahead and took care of it themselves, but three hundred and eighteen. Also, as far as code enforcement complaints that uh, the team has worked on is four hundred and twenty-three complaints from year-to-date. And that may not seem like an awful lot, but uh, with understanding and looking at the amount of time and hours and paperwork and site visits that go into each and every single complaint, that's pretty phenomenal what they've been handling.
I just wanna echo that uh, Shannon has added to this, but the whole committee and commission has really ramped up and uh, it's very impressive, the amount of work and effort that we're seeing. We're seeing Thomas Damon Smith, I think, on a daily basis, send out notices of violation and tickets and uh, those work. We're seeing a lot of compliance around town. I, and I literally was driving around today saying that I'm seeing properties uh, being kept much better. So, good work. All right, um, Jackie, anything to report from your committee assignment?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things from the Public Works. Uh, the Hope Street Parking Garage is expected to be completed in twenty twenty-five. Uh, there's a couple of projects scheduled. Well, there's probably more than that, but I only picked out a couple. Projects are scheduled to begin in twenty twenty-five, which is the Downstreet Bridge and Lake Street Culvert. Uh, also, as a result of multiple accidents that have occurred at the intersection of East Road and Willow Street, um, the Department of Public Works has obtained a Police Department traffic approval to install some flashing L E D lights at the stop and advance warning signs. Hopefully that will help people to realize you gotta stop there because the traffic on Willow Street does not stop. So that were, I, I know that um, Director Rogazinski had mentioned to me to, that maybe some of the neighbors might complain about the flashing lights. I don't think that they will, but I, I guess we'll address that when the time comes. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that um, the Department of Public Works has been authorized to obtain proposals to procure the services of an architect to prepare preliminary design to support the Parks and Rec Department in City Hall. So that's a, a good sign. You?
Sebastian.
Yep, thank you.
Reports, thank you.
Yep.
Cheryl?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, the Transportation Committee has completed a survey on Survey Monkey that we will be making public because we wanna solicit opinions from the public to find out about their needs so we can kind of prioritize what um, residents need as far as getting across town, getting out of town, um, and other services they may need regarding transportation. Animal Control Facility, we met at um, thirty Cross Street was our last, uh, actually, I take that back. We had a special meeting since then. Um, and the committee is, uh, and this will be a future item. I had a conversation earlier with, today with the mayor. Um, the committee had voted to forward to council uh, recommendation to enter into a purchase um, agreement. Uh, we are waiting for final environmental reports, which I understand have come out recently. Um, this building, uh, there's a couple of things. We're at a crossroads with Animal Control Facility. When our original estimate was made, um, we were just coming out of COVID and of course, we, we all knew the cost of construction has increased dramatically, but other things that have occurred since we started looking at this is the state has gotten involved and with their Public Act has actually had some additional requirements for animal control facilities. Basically, our current facility will be out of compliance in four years, so we know we have to do something. But these additional items um, have also required a relook and a relook at the estimates. And so our original estimates we feel are gonna fall short. So the committee's grappling with that, realizing we'll need to come to the Board of Finance, we'll need to come to the council, we'll have to talk to um, C I P. But we still feel that this building, um, given the choices out there for selection, will meet um, the future needs of what our animal control facility could be just for Bristol, but also we'll be looking at what happens if we regionalize. So we've got all these different, you know, balls being thrown at us to try to all juggle at once and figure out the best approach. Um, so when we, we meet again uh, next week, we'll talk about the environmentals and um, there'll probably be a chance, and I, I hope I'm not speaking prematurely, there might be a need for a special um, council meeting just to uh, vote on this building, whether we acquire it or not. Um, Arts and Culture, I've talked about a lot of our programs. We're working on the spring lineup for uh, downtown uh, Rockwell Live. Uh, it's basically uh, finished or, or selected. It's a great lineup. Um, one of the uh, well, I'll wait. I, I don't, I don't wanna steal um, Ariana's thunder. But we're also finalizing our contract for concessions. It's gone a little slower than we thought. Basically, um, the vendor's waiting on state approvals because there's alcohol permits involved. There's Board of Health permits involved and we're hoping that we'll all come together soon. We're also looking at marketing plans as well as a separate website for the theater so that our, our numbers of attendees can grow. Green Hill School, this is almost over the finish line. Um, you know, this is the project that was included in the Capitol. This was the replacement, uh, the geothermal system controls uh, failed after installation. And it's been basically putting in a whole practically new system. Uh, classrooms, offices and utility room condensers are installed and operational, which is great. Rooms have been cooled, rooms can be heated, you know, as we swi- switch that so that our students are in comfortable learning environments. Um, there's a lot of um, you know, uh, fixing of painting, ceiling tiles, the drywall that still needs to occur. Um, there's some other electrical panels, transformers and equipment are all wired and operational. And as we finalize the project, we should be substantially complete by the end of October with just a few remaining items in November. So we'll be glad to put this project behind us. Um, and uh, as you saw, the ca- the capital cost for that. Um, the Fire Board, um, a couple of things and I, even though I was texting the chief on the proper pronunciation, I'm probably gonna mess this up, but it was just announced that the Exchange Club Firefighter of the Year is Lieutenant Al Rudelwitz. No.
Rudy, though, is for sure. Rudy. I think you said Rudy.
Okay, so congratulations to Lieutenant. Okay, so congratulations to Lieutenant Al and uh on your honor. Uh, so that we wanted to make sure that was mentioned, but October is designated as Fire Prevention Month. Um, you know, this is the time to check your smoke, uh CO detectors, change your batteries. However, if you need a detector, there are some available through our fire department. You can go to headquarters or, and I just did this today myself before the meeting. If you go on the city website and go to the fire department's page, there's a thing called Community Connect. You can sign up on this. And they hear, I, everybody says, oh, don't give them information, but this is confidential. This is information they can use unless, in case you have a crises at your home. So you put in who lives in your home, your pets, so that if something should happen, they have this information before they go into your home and know what they're facing and and who's in there. But at the very bottom of that Community uh uh Connect, you can actually hit a button and request a smoke detector, and it will be brought to you. Okay, there's a limited supply, so you'll want to do that sooner than later. And the chief also shared, you can ask for an inspection. If you feel you're concerned about anything and they'll check your flues, they'll check your wire, you know, look to see if things are plugged in correctly, any other kind of yeah, egress uh blockage or so forth. So please take advantage of this. This is, you know, um Fire Prevention Month and uh we all have a part in making sure everybody's safe, so those are my committee announcements. Um, and probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to. Yeah. Uh-oh. Um, just in light of everything, you know, I and I hope I'm not out of line, but um you know, I don't always agree with everybody on council or the mayor, but I'm just gonna share that I have never been prevented by the mayor from talking to any constituent, advocating for constituent, reaching out, being a voice. And um, you know, it actually, you've given me some good advice on reaching out to some. So and and this is all done in a in a position to get service to our residents and also pro- protect the city from any kind of issues, and I just needed to share that.
I appreciate that. Um, Councilman Dickow, go ahead.
The only thing I have, but I don't have the details on it, is about the solar panels going in at the transfer station. I know Commissioner Dunn does have more information on that because I haven't been present at the last two Energy Commission meetings.
We uh item number twelve, uh we'll be talking about that, so we'll 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 cover that pretty thoroughly, I think, and be open for questions. We're not quite near there yet.
I get.
I I know, I know where he is actually too. It's beautiful up there right now. He was just there this weekend, so New Hampshire. Uh, Eric, you have anything?
Yep, I have two. Um, School Readiness Council, the School Readiness Council's Infant and Toddler Committee is hosting a children's clothing drive. Collections, uh collection of new or gently used clothing, newborn to size ten uh for ages birth to grade three at the public library from now through November ninth, from nine uh from nine AM to five PM. Pickup is November thirteenth at the library from nine to five. You do get, there is a flyer. Um, if parents are looking for an affordable, high-quality preschool experience uh for their child, please reach out to the School Readiness Fund and Sites. Now uh now full day is available at Bristol Child Development Center and Imagination, Imagination um and a half day at Edgewood Pre-K Kindergarten Academy. Connecticut Office of Early Childhood is holding a listening, is holding listening sessions to hear from parents and providers uh related to the Early Start Connecticut. Their new state-funded child uh childcare system being rolled out over the next several years. You'll find uh you'll find information about the Early Early Start Connecticut and opportunities to provide feedback at oh boy, uh C T O E C dot org backslash early dash start dash C T. Hmm, that's that. Um, now the next one is a Board of Education. Um, as some of you know, and I just want to say this, uh Dr. Dieter um from the BOE has uh resigned. Um, and I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you um for his service of many years here um and and at the BOE. He will be sorely missed, um but I hope him success in all his future endeavors. And I can't say enough about the guy. He's just a wonderful person and a class act. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I think that's everything there, so we'll move on to number seven, which is old business. Does anybody have any old business? How about number eight, new business? We will move on to number nine, which is resignations.
We have two. Craig Minor resigned from the Transportation Commission and Andrew Rasmussen-Toller resigned from the Economic Community Development.
Motion to accept the resignations and to send a letter of thank you to the individuals for their service.
Second.
All right, so this will make the two openings on transportation now, uh so we have the senior citizen and now the new one that will be created um rete- replacing the planner and ECD. Not too many openings right now, but um I do also want to mention oh, hang on a second, we didn't vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I do also want to mention that we have an alternate on in Wetlands. Um, because Mark is now the council representative, we actually need an elector to replace uh Mark. And um that's it, so not too
Energy, energy.
Energy, energy, I'm sorry, Energy Commission, sorry. Um, so we need to replace Mark on the Energy Commission, so inland Wetlands, Energy um on transportation and ECD, so we're getting there. Uh, we've got a lot, yes.
Um, that was, we were talking before the meeting. Could we, what does the ordinance or, and I should look this up, or how do we describe a senior citizen? What is the age for the Transportation Commission? What qualifies as the senior? So we can make sure we we don't offend anybody if we No, it just says senior citizens, so what would that definition?
Depends on who you are and how old you are, I think, how you answer this question. I I clearly think it's not fifty-five and over. It's definitely not that.
If we could get some guidance, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Senior Center membership starts at fifty-five.
And doesn't ERP as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I plead the fifth.
Fifty-five.
All right, good question, though. All right, so new appointments for October, um no other resignations, right? We we got them all good. New appointments for October, not too many here. Um, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Sean Dunn um uh Energy Commission. He's been a great leader for them.
Second. So moved. Oh, moved, second, oh.
There we go.
There we go.
Moved, seconded, we got it. Um, Sean's there. Any last regrets for anybody here? No, Sean's been doing a great job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. By the way, I have ten twenty-eight as the resignation. Is that the right date on that one? Okay, good. It was in question mark here, so I meant to ask about that. All right, um Stormwater Trust. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Ryan Bodley, who is the treasurer uh of the city, a a young gentleman who does want to get involved. Uh, that term would expire in seven twenty-seven, and I will just also add that um there is past practice for this. We did have a question, can the treasurer do this? It's a perfect position for them to be in charge of the trust, but that's where Patty came from, and I think she served for thirty or forty years uh in that position, so. Any to motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And finally, um in November, the acting mayor um assignment will uh expire. Uh, I'm gonna a- ask for the reappointment of Sebastian Panietto as the acting mayor. That term will expire in eleven twenty-five, so move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. You notice how I didn't ask for comments, Sebastian? You've been doing a great job. We appreciate it, and I hope to never need uh those services, so alrighty. Um, let's see here. That's it for appointments? We didn't miss any, correct? We're good?
Resolutions.
Now we're on to resolutions. Yes, you guys have to remind me not to call the vote, but we'll do that. So the first is a senior volunteer tax credit. Um, I'll entertain a motion first to waive the reading. There's a bunch of sections here.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now I'll entertain a motion to actually approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Great, um really no major comments here, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I just to let everybody know, this is a yearly occurrence for us. This uh senior tax credit has been something that's been very valuable to the seniors. I know the Senior Center, I get to go to the dinner every year. Um, has um many, I think it's up to three hundred people that uh that do perform these services, and as a matter of fact, we add added seniors to City Hall to help guide and direct people uh as the City Hall is new. So it's been a very successful program. Um, I don't believe there are any changes to this program. Uh, and this is a year-to-year resolution that we have to approve um through the Assessor's Office and Department of Aging, so. Any questions or comments? No, all those, oop.
Nope.
Erica, go ahead for the the call.
Councilmember Dickow?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Panietto?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion is uh approved. All right, next is the refunding of bonds. Uh, this is the third time tonight, so um I think we can waive the reading, so I entertain a motion to waive the reading.
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Oh, sorry, not Jesus. Uh, that's good. No, that's good. Now, now we need a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, there we go. Um, and this one, we do need a roll call vote, but we don't have any comments or questions third time around, right? Go ahead, Erica.
Councilmember Dickow?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Councilmember Panietto?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Aye.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Aye.
And the mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we move on to um the resolution for uh the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Somebody want to go ahead and do this one? You can read it in there.
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor or acting mayor acting on behalf of the city to execute a grant agreement with the Connecticut of Energy and en- environmental protection for three hundred twenty thousand dollars in conjunction with the Connecticut Recreational Trails Program for the multi-use trail path connecting the West End, Downtown and Middle Street in Bristol.
Second.
Great, um comments on this, Ray? Do you want to make any additional comments? I know that this is uh on your behalf, and you've been sitting here waiting patiently. We'll get you up in the next one, maybe two.
This is a grant that, there is a supplemental appropriation from the city in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. And it really came through uh with the assistance of, you know, NVCOG, and the grant originates from Connecticut, you know, deep. Uh, it's a trail bike path to really interconnect, come up with the design, not the construction, come up with the design to interconnect Rockwell Park to uh West End, the Bracket Park, to uh Memorial Boulevard, and ultimately go all the way over to uh, you know, Middle Street. Uh, like I said, the uh grant is for engineering only. It is a complex project that will involve, you know, easements, a couple pedestrian bridges across the quabic between uh Jacob Street and the West End. Uh, but this is essentially, you know, the first step. You know, ultimately, we're looking to uh, you know, transform, you know, downtown, you know, Bristol and inter- interconnect some of the uh, you know, high points, the points that make Bristol Bristol.
Great, yeah, make it much more walkable um community setting and safe for pedestrians and bikers in this case, so. Good comments or questions here? All right, and this is a resolution. Back, by the way, Corp Counsel, a little different on this. We haven't done resolutions on all these. I'm just curious why this is a resolution um as compared to a regular motion. Do you, maybe you know?
Could always, I always defer to Corporation Counsel, but I believe it's a requirement of Connecticut deep
Deep.
Grant agreement.
Okay, we haven't had many of those recently. That explains it very good. Erica, you can do the roll call.
Councilmember Dickow?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Councilmember Panietto?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Aye.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Um, we'll move on now to number twelve. Uh, uh, Councilman Dickow asked about this, so this is the po- solar power facility site lease and easement agreement. So um the motion is opening for me, so if somebody else wants to go ahead and do it, I'll let you do it if you got it open before me to read it.
I got the lease open.
So I got it. I'll I'll go ahead and do it. I'll entertain a motion to consider and take action on a lease uh buy-in between the City of Bristol and C-Tech Solar LLC for use of a portion of the city uh closed landfill site at six eighty-five Lake Avenue and to uh to place and operate a solar array. Um, I move that this, I'll I'll entertain the motion. Well, go ahead, you had, you have it open?
No.
Okay.
Oh, you had it, oh.
I know, all right. I'd rather have you guys read the motion since it's the actual motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm a bit.
Whoever gets it first? It's twelve. It's on page two of it.
I move that the City of Bristol enter into site lease and easement agreement with C T C-Tech Solar LLC for for the use of the portion of the closed landfill at six eighty-five Lake Avenue under the terms as presented. And that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol. I further move that the proposed leasing lease and easement agreement be referred to the Planning Commission for its review and report pursuant to Connecticut State Statute, Section eight twenty-four. And I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Counsel for review.
Okay. Great, and that gave me a second to found my uh little cheat sheet here of the highlights, and then we'll certainly ask the Commissioner Dunn and and Ray to add anything. Um, but this is a twenty-year initial term, an option for five extra years. It's set at fifty thousand dollars per year, which is that about current market rate. Um, initial um offerings were far below that, so big kudos out to Attorney Conlon, who uh very patiently over almost the last four years has been working on this and uh has gotten them to that most important part of the agreement. It's gonna occupy about seven acres of the closed and capped landfill area. It will not disturb that landfill cap, um and it's laid directly on the ballast system on the surface. It's gonna produce about two megawatts of electrical energy. Uh, it will not disturb any of our transfer station operations. Um, remember, C-Tech will not be paying personal property taxes here. This is a city-owned uh property, so they don't, that doesn't apply. Uh, and there was one other thing I was gonna say about it, but um I'll leave it open to Commissioner Dunn to talk about this a little bit too, if he'd like, his his thoughts.
Much like the happy news of that uh Councilperson Dickow mentioned earlier on both our awards for gold level certification and climate leader designation. This is a story of persistence. Superintendent Ruggen Sisti, many in the administration, the current Corp Counsel, and others have been pursuing this for years, so this is great news for clean energy in the City of Bristol.
Right. Oh, I know what I also wanted to mention is they did go out to Siding Council already for approval, so that was the other thing I did want to mention. Um, Councilman Dickow, do you want to add anything, or did we answer your questions too, I think is
Questions.
Very important. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Very good. Uh, we will move this one to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy the rest of your hike.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Bye, Sean.
All right, number thirteen is Firehouse number three. Who wants this one?
I've got it open.
Go ahead.
To award contract two C two five dash zero two two construction of new Firehouse three to WJ Mountford Company in the amount of six million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Second.
Chief Hart, you want to come up and say a few words? You you've hung in as well. I gotta give you the 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 microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's been a long wait. Um, the committee has worked diligently to be good stewards of the taxpayer money um in getting this contract and bid out there. Um, Councilman Panietto being on the um committee, and of course, Ray has been uh instrumental in giving us sage advice on how to uh move this forward. Uh, I have to admit, when the first bids were opened up, they were north of eight million dollars, so I was um sweating a little bit because I didn't want to go in front of Dave McCauskey. Um, but uh when the bids started going down, um I was very happy. This gives us a buffer of about eight hundred thousand dollars uh from what the balance we have. Um, so everything that we had, I had to take out of the Firehouse as a bid alternate um is now back in. Uh, we didn't have to reverse engineer anything, um and I think this is going, you're gonna be very pleased. And I think this is going, you're going to be very pleased with the product that we've come up with. And with the extra money, hopefully, in consultation with the architect, we'll be able to add a couple of things that will enhance our training and readiness capabilities.
Right. Sebastian, you want to add anything?
Glad we're taking this step. I really appreciate the work of the Firehouse Committee and Chief. Thank you for all your efforts also, Ray as well. I'm glad to see it happen.
Yeah, we had almost 13 bids, I think, in this, which is excellent, too, to see that there was a large group out there. And this is somebody, have we worked with WJ Mountford before? I don't think we have.
Yeah, they've done the, they did the library.
Oh, okay.
Expansion. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention John Lovico, who is an absolute encyclopedia of knowledge as far as building is concerned. And he told me, when we wrapped everything up, he leaned over and said, this is a great project. And I said, well, for who? And he said, well, for us and for the contractors. He goes, it's right in the sweet spot. And he said, their bids are going to come in under, and.
He was right.
Optimistically optimistic, and I'm glad he was right.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? All right, we're going to do the vote now, stay right there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Congratulations, that's good. Let's get moving forward. Looking forward to the groundbreaking.
Absolutely.
All right, number 14 is the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services Grant. I'll go ahead and do this one now. Let me just make sure I got the right thing. Let me get it read it. So I'll entertain a motion to have the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to transfer to the Bristol Burlington Health District the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DMS, grant known as How We Can Help. The award is $75,000 a year. The funds are paid to the City of Bristol because BBHD had originally applied for this grant on behalf of the city. DMS has suggested BBHD assume control over the grant, and BBHD will ensure that 100% of the grant funds shall be dispersed in accordance with the Scope of Services Section of the State of Connecticut Purchase Service Contract. You will also further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Counsel to effectuate the same.
So moved.
We moved it. Tyler, and you seconded it, that's good. Yep, no, I was just reading it as a motion, and that's perfect. This is something that came to us quickly, by the way, so I'm glad we can get it on. Marco wants to change the vendor for this program. It's, it's a valuable program that I think has provided a lot of good service. He just wants to get more hands on, and they've been doing more of this work. So I think it makes sense. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, so we will go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive.
Hang on one second, I want to make sure we know who is going to come in with us on this.
The attorneys in our office are all coming in.
For just this executive session, go ahead, Eric.
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session. All right, we have everybody back. Just a reminder, there were no votes taken in executive session, and I need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second. Dickow got the second, I heard him. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I'll start on my left, go ahead, Eric. Oh, I thought you. I know, I changed my mind.
I hereby move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to bid for the purchase of these known as Lot 216 Ambler Road and Lot 217 Grassy Road, both lots located on, in the City of Bristol. The public auction occurs at 12 noon on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, at the premises. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporate Counsel Office for effectuation of this motion.
Second. Great.